You ready? Okay, do you want to do a recording or no? Oh, it's already recording, sorry. Okay, good evening, welcome to the Special Committee of the Hall for Monday, January 8, 2024. For the record, we are in council chambers and also on Zoom. Corey McCur, please call the roll.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Patterson, Counselor Piazza, Counselor Artali, Counselor Sheffield are present this evening.
Okay.
Okay, good evening. And tonight, I'm here to request permission to waive the bid process for purchasing additional sanitation and recycling toters. So, I'm running low. We typically use the same bidders, so I use Otto and I use Toter brand for my bins, my containers each year. I have a price for 160 toters, so 60 medium size, the 64 gallon in blue recycling, 50 green municipal solid waste, and 60 95 gallon municipal solid waste as well. Toter came in at the low price at $10,820.50. Honestly, I prefer Toter, was happy they came in lower. Their product's been really reliable and we've had good service with them. If we've had, I think I've had a couple of breaks over the, over the course of the last three years and they've always given us a replacement totaler. So, looking to purchase more from you guys, okay? So with that, looking for approval.
Okay, open the floor for discussion. Counsel, Counselor Sheffield?
Bill, how you doing? Good?
Good evening.
Happy New Year.
Thank you, sir.
How often do these need to be replaced?
So, so each year, I think I purchase right around 150 toters. Yep, so it's about the same. I run out just about the end of the, the season, so we get a lot of sales throughout the year. It's, it always works out to about 150 a year.
Oh, per year, okay.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, these are no cost really to the city. We, we do the cap, the expenditure at the beginning to purchase the toters, but they are actually sold to the residents. So I just want to be clear on that. So the reason it's coming is because of the expenditure for the state put that initial outlay out, but they do, it is fully refunded by the sales of the toters.
So that's a great point, Ron. So I can, I did run a report in Pub Works, so from, let's see, December 31st, 2023 to July 1st, just a week or so ago, we spent $11,454 on toters. And in revenue, getting back, we received $12,419. So they pay for themselves. Thank you.
Any other questions, guys? Deputy Mayor Depot and then Counsel Piazza.
Can you remind us why we changed from the other vendor? Because last time, we talked about both and I think we had a quote from both, but just as a reminder.
We did. So two years ago, I purchased them, so Otto came in with the low bid. And I had a couple of breaks on, on the containers themselves. So the hydraulic guys pick up, the handle scrap, the toters, the barrels, and, and I've had a couple of breaks. So it actually, we prefer the Toter brand and it's worked out this year, they came in as a better price. So it worked out.
And I just wanted to say, I actually have both. I have purchased both and they, like to me as a consumer, they're both very good. So.
Yep, so Otto has a, like a fuse seam at the bottom of the barrel and we've had, those are the couple that we've had break. And Toter does not have that seam.
But, so I, I was just going to say, like I, you know, if you think the other ones are best, like I said, from my untrained eye, they, from the resident standpoint, I think they're both great. So if you think the total ones are better, I think that's a good plan to go with those.
That's what I would recommend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Piazza?
I was just going to piggyback off of that, saying I have both also. And, and have actually watched the Public Works workers come and put them on there and so forth and see how it works. And especially if they get blown over by the wind, which they're less likely to, but if they do, and if they, if they roll, they take it well.
They're durable.
Yes, they are.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing nine, I'll take a motion, move this to the mayor and council meeting of 1:15, 2024.
So moved.
You're right. I forgot.
Tuesday.
Well, because Martin Luther King Day.
Correct.
So it'll be on Tuesday. So I'll take a motion, move this to mayor and council meeting of 1:16, 2024.
So moved.
Second?
And we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing nine, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Okay, Bill, front landing and windows?
Okay, so the second piece for me is a project that we've had in the works for a little bit. So the scope of the project includes removal and replacement of all of the first floor windows in the municipal building, removal and replacement of the front entrance, storefront and doors, the section of the building that you guys all came through this evening, removal and replacement of the entrance concrete paving, which is the top pad on the top of stairs, and the inclusion of the installation of a snow melt system for that pad, handrail removal and replacement, and select masonry repairs. So three pieces to it, and I'll step through them quickly for you. The windows, so the building is 1966 vintage, the facility here. The intent is to have this project, the whole, the whole thing completed this spring and summer. If we move forward with this approval or the request for approval, it takes two to three months to have the windows fabricated, so it is timely. Total windows on the first floor are 92 of them. The newest of the windows, and there were six of them purchased in 2001, they're in the rear of the building, they leak a little bit of water, but they're 20, you know, three years old now. The original windows, I couldn't find a date for the origin, the rest of them, the other than the six, but the, both the building official and I both looked and were unable to find out how old they were. But I did find prices to replace the windows going back to 1998. So they're much older than that even, so they're quite old. Average life expectancy for the windows are 20 to 30 years. The warranty on the new ones will be a year on the installation, 10 years on all the The, the project will include all permitting. The windows have some asbestos containing material in the glazing, so that'll be abated. Complete demo and full installation of all new windows. The storefront, again, that's a section of the building that you guys will walk through this evening coming in. That scope is going to include the replacement of the existing curtain wall facade, that's the glass hole panel, which includes two sets of double doors, two sets of single doors, all of the closers and hardware, and the transfer over of the security devices. The last piece is the concrete work. That's the top pad. As you come up the stairs, you have granite steps, come up to the top, that whole concrete pad right there. Looking to replace that, so it's badly cracked. Over the years of putting down ice melt, salt, et cetera, concrete's porous, that type of a product, when you treat it, it gets down the side and you, it causes like a popping or a delaminating of the concrete. So it causes a corrosion underneath the surface and that's kind of how the concrete gets damaged. Going along with that, to eliminate that problem, is to install a snow melt system. So we're going to have electric grid underneath the concrete as we pour it. It'll be thermostatically controlled, also pick up water, so if it's wet out there, it'll turn itself on. All automatic, but that's included in the work. On the west side of the top there, there's some damaged hand railing, that's going to be repaired and replaced, or replaced. And also, there's some damaged, broken concrete pieces on the face, also over on the west side. So in summary, looking to get approval from you to award Pelletier Construction Management the contract. They were recommended by our architect, Lothrop Associates. We did confirm that they have the capacity and manpower to complete the project in a timely manner, and we received three references that all come back very positive from them. Total cost for the job is $621,699. It'll be paid by capital reserve. Questions?
Question from the council, Deputy Mayor Depot?
So this project was quoted several years ago by, I believe by your predecessor, and then we never went forward with it. How does this quote differ from that one?
Well, cost increase for sure, as, as you're well aware, you know, labor. But the price, I think, that Timmy had gotten was the ones, the numbers that I found on the computer from 1998, so that was quite a few years ago. I don't know if that was Timmy's. Was that, was there a more recent one? I don't have the more recent numbers. Ron may remember it, but I don't, I don't have that.
No, Tim, Tim had those on, it was right before he had retired, he had gotten the prices for those.
Yep.
And I, I don't remember what those were.
But they were individual quotes, more so with different vendors, not a one vendor to do the entire project, right?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I guess my question was more to, is it similar in scope? Are we changing the scope? Is it, that, I was more about that, obviously the price is going to go up because it was several years.
Absolutely, Ron?
I believe there was a little bit of change in scope. I don't think it was all the windows, I think it was a portion of the windows originally. So this one, we did all of the windows on the, the main floor. There may have been a little bit of change in the design of the front landing, based on what we ended up doing with this project is, previously they just was to get quotes to kind of get an idea of what the project was going to be, and that's what the previous Director Umeritz had done, was to get those quotes, just to kind of get an idea of the project. Since then, we've contracted with the architecture firm to assist us with us, with this project, and to do the drawings and to help us with the bid process. So I think the scope of it was a lot more detailed. And just to give you kind of an idea, Pelletier was low bid at the 622 approximately, the high bid came in at $1,79500. So that was, that was the scope. This project closed, the bids were due on October 19th, and the reason why it took so long was because of the vetting process. There was alternative project, windows that were put in the bid package, so that was all vetted by the engineering firm to make sure that there was a comparable. There's some questions with the warranty at one point, that was all resolved. So there's some things that were, took some time to resolve. And the piece that, why this is, I don't want to say became emergent, but kind of is, you're seeing it tonight on both sides, is there's a subcontractor involved with the contractor, and they only hold the price for X amount of days. So we're kind of approaching that timeframe. The vendor was good with knowing that we're bringing it today, so we just wanted to make sure that you were good with the project, so we could get that letter of intent, so that way he can lock in with his subcontract, so we don't have a price change. So I just kind of wanted to make it, put it out there why we're kind of here today.
So to further address your question, so we are going with all the windows. The other thing is that the front landing, one of the things that has concerned me is that when we put salt down, then the salt attacks the aluminum frame. So we didn't, we want to go, go away from that, but then we went to the green salt, the green product, and that ended up eating the concrete. And you'd have freezing and, freezing and lifting, and that's why when you go out there, it looks like a patchwork quilt. So we started thinking about what could we do, and I said, what can we put a drainage system in there? So we are going to put, so we decided we were going to put a heating system. At one point, we had talked about using water, and then we decided to go with, you know, heated water. But then we decided to go with the electric system that we're going to use now. And any runoff is now going to go through these grates that are going to drain and drain off. So we should save on salt and ice melt and those kind of things. Now, because of the concrete, correction, because of the marble steps, granite steps, we're still going to have to put something there, and it's probably going to be sand or things like that, because they still get slippery. And they're so thick, you can't put a heating system on them, and I didn't want to change out the granite steps. So we're still going to have that part, but this is why we decided to go with the concept that we have now. So did that answer your?
Yes.
Question? Okay, any other questions or comments? Counselor Piazza?
So I was going to ask, I, I think, did the previous bid include the electromagnetic heating system?
The heat?
Yeah.
The ice, the snow melt?
From way back?
No, not from back then.
No, okay, I didn't think so. So with that said, I just wondered with the asbestos abatement, how would that affect traffic coming in and out of here? Would that, would it be a different entrance? Would we have to reroute, detour?
There'll be a little bit of that. That's a great question. So the plan is to, you know, kind of go around the room, the building when we do the windows. We'll have a, you know, office space available, so we can relocate employees into that space. There will be a time when I need to relocate, you know, reroute the traffic to the rear of the building when I address the storefront in the beginning. We're going to break the storefront into two pieces, so that it'll be minimal at, at the, at the best, you know, so to try to, you know, when we get down to the last pieces, we'll have to reroute it. But the, the plan is to try to work around everything by restaging offices and as needed.
And when would the start time be if it?
We're looking to get going spring, summer. So again, if approved, I need to order the windows, so that's going to be two to three months out. So as soon as we get that going, we're looking to get that started. Stage all the material here, you know, and get going with it.
Now, would that be something that you would put on the website, just so customers come in when they look at the web, or somebody maybe new coming into the area looking for hours, and that would say, you know, how to enter into the building?
Absolutely. So that's a great question. So that'll be something that we communicate through the Facebook pages and everything else. Absolutely.
Yeah, we can look ourselves, or they, we can direct them to look at that. Okay.
Yep, yep, so something on Facebook, and we'll have plenty of signage out in front.
Okay, great.
News, Mayor Depot?
I just wanted to clarify the, your answer to her question about the heat being included. The last quote that Director Umeritz did, did include heat in the, the one in between.
Right.
Yeah.
You are correct.
It didn't have, that they don't have?
The one that he brought, because I've only been here since, for six years.
Yes.
Within that time, Director Umeritz brought a quote to do this project, and it included heat.
Okay.
Okay.
But the one from way back did.
From like 90 something, did it?
The one from 90 something, I'm sure that's before my time.
Yeah. So I did find old records here. So I had the original bids from 1998, and then I did find proposals from 2021, right? But that piece, I don't have that, the electric heat broken out in. The only thing I have is the windows and then the storefront, and that's it.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, did I see a hand? Counselor Norris?
The, the electric that you're talking about, warming up, will that be on the ramp also? Or just the front landing?
No, just on the top step, on the top, once you come up the granite steps, it'll just be on that piece. So everything needs to be jackhammered out of there. Report a whole new slab, that electric heat is going to be underneath the surface several inches, and that's the way it's going. We're not going to come down the ramp.
The, the reason why I ask is, because now, if you're looking at the front of the building, and I'm looking at the top of the ramp, that concrete that has come away from the, the railing?
Yeah.
So my brain tells me, did salt cause that? Was it, well, I don't want to get, but, so how do we stop that or not allow that to happen in the future? Because you're still going to put salt on the ramp.
So the top, right, so you saw the, the west side of it. So some of that is all busted out. So that will be included in the repair. So I believe that that damage was also caused by the salt. So we've been salting up there for a number of years. But the electric heat is going to cover that whole footprint, that whole thing. It's not going to do the, the ramp itself.
But it will do the area that I'm speaking on.
Absolutely will.
Okay.
Absolutely will.
Okay. And then the last question is, in terms of a construction bond, like how, what percent do these guys, or will they have to give some type of bond?
Ron, they have a bond, right?
Yeah, so as far as a performance bond and a payment bond, it will be 100% of the project.
100%?
Yeah, they, they'll need to take out for that.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any other questions or comments on this? Ron?
So if this is approved, there is a chance that we will be bringing another resolution to rescind this one and to come back. And the reason why I say that is because we're looking at other funding sources as well. Right now, it's a capital reserve fund that we're using. We do have municipal grants and aid, as well as a small portion there, we've been using it for the engineer. But the big one is we've been talking with business development and Aaron Brooks and his team about potentially using regi funds for the window portion. But there is a piece that we have to show that there is greenhouse savings by changing the windows out, and we're just trying to get our arms around it. But in the mat, the essence of time, we just kind of put it through the funding source through capital for now. But if we do go that route, I will have Aaron come in, because I'm not going to try to speak to regi funds and how that works. But I know there's a, that there is a study that we have to show that there is a savings in order for us to use those funds.
So, so basically, at very high level, in order to use the regi funds for this, we have to show an energy savings based on the windows that we have now that are single pane, not double pane, also the leakage that we have. So we have to show, and we have an engineer looking at this, to try to come up with, with our number. And then if it meets, if it meets the threshold, then they will, business development will allow us to use regi funds for this. So if that happens, like Ron said, we'll come back to you again with a resolution to rescind, based on, the number will be the same, but the capital reserve funds, the, the source of funds will be different. And then we'll get Aaron Brooks to come in and explain how we met that and, and what it means, how we're able to use regi funds. Counselor Sheffield?
And if we're not able to use those funds, what's the, the next, or we'll just go with the capital reserve and that will be, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the special mayor and council meeting of 1:08, 2024.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing nine, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you.
Danny is, is he here yet?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Is the microphone on? Okay.
I have no idea. I guess it is. Sounds like it. I was asked to come here and say some stuff about Robert's Rules. And Robert's Rules can get fairly arcane, so I'm not quite sure what it is you want me to say. And, but I brought out, brought with me a list of cheat sheets. Let me have one for myself.
Can you introduce yourself?
My name is John Malzpenden, and I'm, to be very honest with you, I'm not a registered parliamentarian. I've just been running workshops on Robert's Rules of Order and how to run a meeting for, I don't know how long. I took some courses in it years and years ago, and they haven't changed all that much, they just become more arcane. And particularly, would like you people to stay away from all that. The simpler you can keep it, the better off you'll be. First of all, the use of Robert's Rules. Your governing statutes are the Connecticut State statutes. And where those are silent, you have your city charter and local ordinances. Now, if those are all silent on what you're talking about, that's when Robert's Rules are kicked in. Okay? Now, there's some interesting parallels between the state statutes and Robert's Rules of Order. Robert's Rules of Order to help you move your agenda forward. Now, some type of people will misuse that as a way to stop you from doing something. And if you deal with this enough, you learn how to work around that. And it, but that was never the intention of Robert's Rules. Robert's Rules, just like state statutes, are there to protect everybody's rights. And if this is a city council meeting, it's people with the rights of people on the council, nobody else. Okay? So if you have people in the audience, they don't have rights to interrupt you or anything like that. If this were a private organization, the governing stuff would be your bylaws and all that sort of stuff. And where those are silent, that's when Robert's Rules would kick in. But it's interesting that, for instance, the state statute, particularly Freedom of Information, and Robert's Rules are both governed there to protect the rights of everybody. And if you're going to overrule a right, or cut someone's rights shot, it takes a two-thirds vote. Okay? To give you an example, from the State Freedom of Information Committee, you're supposed to put out an agenda, this is for regular meetings, so many days before you have the meeting. And it usually would have a place where it says you can add to the agenda. But if you're going to do that, it takes a two-thirds vote to add to the agenda. That's to protect the public's right, because they have a right to know what's going on and come and comment on it under citizens' comments. Now, under Robert's Rules, the same kind of situation prevails. Everybody has rights. But if you want to cut a discussion off, move, move the agenda or move the question, it takes a two-thirds vote to pass, because you're limiting the rights of people who don't want to vote at that time. And it, it's best to keep all this very, very simple. That's why I, this is probably the best chart that I've ever come across on how to do this. You have privileged motions and you have main motions. Generally, all you're dealing with are main motions. Anybody can make a motion, but it requires a second for, for you to discuss it all. And I should also caution you, under Robert's Rules of Order, you have a motion on the floor, and you should stick to the discussion of that motion. You shouldn't have a situation where someone starts giving a speech, and then when they're through, make a motion. That should be totally out of order under Robert's Rules. You should try to, if you're running a meeting, you should try to restrict people attacking each other, particularly by name. If someone is attacked by name, say Mr. Norris here, and I attack him, he's blah, 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 he would have an immediate right to respond to that. It's what they would call a right of personal privilege. Most motions are passed by simple majority, however. But the things that limit the public's rights, or your own rights, take a two-thirds majority. And I also, if you're ever running a meeting, such as the mayor here, it's not a good idea to, for the person running the meeting to make a motion, because it puts you in a conflict of interest situation. You know, you know, handling your own motion would be like a judge handling a case where he has an interest. And the fact is that if person, if the mayor has to make a motion, then the odds are, he doesn't have the votes to pass it. So why bother, you know? Why get yourself into all these kind of hoops that you have to jump through? You can limit discussion, but among yourselves, there's no particular point if, if you're really trying to achieve a consensus. At your main, at your regular meetings, you would have citizens' comments. You do have the right to limit citizens' comments to a certain amount of time per person. And although I live in Colchester, and they have never done this, I've always recommended that they try, that if people were commenting on it, they should limit, you should try to limit them to the comments about what you're actually going to be dealing with, things on the agenda. Beyond this, I'm not sure if the, I've, if you have any particular questions or concerns that I can answer that this doesn't address, or if you have questions on this, I can speak to that.
So one of the things for the council that we're going to be talking about on the 22nd is our rules. And we have, the mayor and council has twenty-second is our rules. And we have, the mayor and council has rules, some of which are duplicative of Robert's rules, and some are not. But if you run into an issue where there's a rule that's not governed by your local rules, then Robert's rules applies.
That's correct. And it's always very helpful to stay away from very arcane situations because sometimes the only way to deal with it is to just cut the discussion off, back up and start again, which is the easiest way to deal with that, by the way. So I don't know whether I've been helpful or not, but.
And Deputy Mayor Depot?
I'll ask a question. What do you think is one of the common mistakes that people make where they think they're following the rules, but they're maybe violating them?
Uh, if you're running things like a town meeting, that gets, because some people, one of the most common ones is people making a speech and then trying to make a motion. And that's totally out of order. You should always insist that be, that there's a motion on the floor, and people should address that motion. And another thing, I've seen this happen a lot. I was on the Board of Selectmen in Colchester for four terms until I got saddle sore and so let somebody younger deal with it. The, one of the, one of the common things is that people will make personal attacks. And the bigger the, the membership you're dealing with, like at a town meeting, the more apt that is to occur. And you should try very hard not to let that happen. And sometimes it's almost impossible because if it's a very contentious issue, it will happen. And I don't know whether you have town meetings in Groton or not, but someone questioned my, one of my rulings. The former first selectman had attained a, an opinion from the town council that the town meeting has to pass the budget on to a referendum. And I, and it was brought up, and I ruled no, that's not true, under Robert's rules and under the charter. If you have a right to vote yes, to pass it on, you have a right to vote no, not to do it, you know? And they support the town council, said, well, do all, look, I'm just here to tell you what the rules say, you know? A parliamentarian doesn't rule, the chair rules. Parliamentarian just tells you what the rules are. So, uh, sometimes the idea of people making speeches and then trying to put motions on the floor after their speech, that's totally out of order. You should always be speaking to a motion, not the other way around. Because if you get the other way around, you get into all kinds of hassles and all kinds of personal disputes that you really should avoid. So, I mean, I don't know if that answered your question or not, but.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Sheffield?
When you, let's say reconsidering a vote, let's say we made a vote and all of a sudden, you know, some changes their mind and you want to reconsider, can that be done at that moment of the motion being voted on, or does that have to be a later date to be reconsidered?
It depends. Like a lawyer, I'll tell you, it depends. I'm not an attorney, by the way. Basically, if it's at the same meeting, you can make a motion to reconsider a previous motion. But if it's a different meeting, you've adjourned, and you have a different meeting, it ha, it, you have to put on the agenda, has to warn it, so to speak, that you're going to reconsider it. Otherwise, the public wouldn't know. See, you've got to always keep in mind the Freedom of Information Act, which I don't know what your particular backgrounds are. But if you've ever tried to read the Freedom of Information Act, it's, you know, like they used to say, a camel was an animal put together by a committee? Well, that's what happens with, with freedom of information. You read it, and you think you got your question answered, and then you read a couple more paragraphs, and it gets unanswered. And a few more pages, and, and it's sort of like the Freedom of Information Act has grown over the years to it becomes blah, 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 you know? And so I, if I had a question with freedom of information, I'd call up one of their agents and ask them what's likely to happen in this situation. Because, yeah, just keep it simple, you know?
Our rules say that you can reconsider at that meeting, but you could also reconsider at the next meeting.
But it, but it has to be one that you have to do, you're going to do that.
Right. And then if you don't get it at the next meeting, then you've timed out. You do not get an opportunity to reconsider. Then your only option would be to rescind, which is, which is basically you, you nullify the, the, the motion. Now, reconsider needs to be from a person of the prevail, of the, that voted in the prevailing party.
Party, yeah.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
I was just going to ask for that clarification.
Yeah, it has to be the, on you, the person making the motion has to be on the prevailing side on the original vote. It does bring up an interesting question, a situation. If an election has gone by, and none of the members who are on the old council or on the new one, you, you'd have to bring it up as a new motion, even though you're reconsidering it. You know, these are the arcane kind of things I try to stay away from. If there's anything else I can help you with? Yeah.
Counselor Piazza?
Thank you. So could we just walk through an example of reconsidering the motion? Just throw an example out, if you could. Just make up a motion, blah, blah, blah.
A motion to build a new highway from Groton Point to, I don't know, here. Okay? And you've sent it to engineers, and you do it. And then you get to do it, you've passed the motion, and then all your constituents are all upset, you know, that it'll move my house. And, you know, there's wetlands here. And you may want to reconsider that, but you may not. I mean, the state has got that problem. They built, they made a motion to build Route eleven. It goes from Colchester and it ends in the middle of nowhere in Salem. And it, as a resident of Colchester, I wish they would put it and make getting down to Groton a lot easier. Or, or another perfect example of, the state has a four-lane highway around Wyndham or Manic. And it was originally intended to connect to, what is it, three ninety, whatever it is, ninety-one, in Manchester. And, but then the two connectors stop, and you have Route six. So to make it safe, we have to keep widening Route six. And we don't want to connect the two multi-lane highways because, oh, it'll interfere with the, the environment here. Whether you put the road here or there, it's the same wetlands, you know, really. They, they should have taken all that into consideration before they spent all that money.
So to reconsider it, so once you did, like, say, we voted on the highway?
Yeah.
And we did that.
Mm-hmm.
Next meeting comes in, who would actually, who can make the motion to reconsider? How would you actually formally want to reconsider the?
Person who voted on the prevailing side could make the motion.
So I could come and say, I'd like to, I'd like to make the motion to reconsider the vote on the highway?
Yes. Yeah, but if you're going to do that at the next meeting, it has to be mentioned on the agenda. Otherwise, you'd, one thing depriving the public of the right to know.
Counselor Sheffield?
So that would have to be placed on the agenda prior to the next meeting?
Yeah.
For the reconsideration.
Yes.
So that means the council would need to contact me, and then I would let people know that we're going to reconsider, and it would be on the agenda.
And it, on something like that, it's, would be best not to do it in the way of adding it to the agenda. Because the public could say, we didn't know you were going to do this. You know, you want to avoid that kind of things. So.
That's very helpful because, you know, things that pop up that, you know.
I do know.
That, you know, it's nice to have that option, have a whole separate motion to reconsider it, and then revote on it, and then the public knows what's going on.
Yeah. Let me give you some personal background. I'm a retired history social studies teacher at Don Bacon Academy in Colchester. And, but I also was on numbers of boards. I was on the planning and zoning board back in the seventies. And then I, they, he used to have the borough of Colchester, which was like a self-governing. And I was an elected assessor to that. And then they abolished, thank God, the borough and incorporate everything into the town. And then I, when I retired, I decided to become involved, and I ran for the Board of Selectmen where I served, up until I turned seventy. Somebody younger can do this. But I've also been on the Board of Assessment Appeals, and, and also, I'm, right now, I'm on the Ethics Commission, which only meets when there's specific complaints or something. But my, my major was history, and I have a minor in government. And so I've, you know, tried to deal with all kinds. And I would try to, you know, have classes in government, or I would try to get them to, kids to understand, you know, you just can't go down there and scream and expect to. And I also would try to get them, how, learn to teach them how to lobby public officials. And I'd say, never threaten them, you know, if you don't do this, I'll vote against you. Because you automatically kiss that vote goodbye, you know? They'll just find their support somewhere else. So, but anyway, I hope I've been helpful.
There's a, another area that sometimes people have challenges with, and that is to table something or to lay on the table versus postpone to a set time or postpone to a future meeting. So when you want to table something, that implies, if you go back into Robert's rules, that implies that you're laying it on the table for that meeting. So.
Yeah, but, but wait a minute. To take it off the table, you have to have a vote.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But you're putting it on the table to go into other business, then you got to come back to take it off the table and then to deliberate, discuss, debate, and vote.
Yes.
Do, if you want to move something to a future meeting, then you postpone to a later date. And that, what we've done here in the past is that date either corresponds to the date of a committee of the whole or the date of a mayor and council meeting. And then that discussion will then happen then. It'll be on the agenda. And then it gets, that way, where it gets tied in with the FOIA, is the public knows what we're going to be discussing. And that's what a lot of this is about, is to make sure that we keep the, the public involved so that they know what business that we're discussing, this public business. Counselor Sheffield?
So that would be, then we should use the term motion to postpone, or should it be the?
If you're going to postpone, you should postpone for a specific period of time or to a specific meeting.
To a specific date of the?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Make a motion to postpone this agenda item or agenda item, whatever, to this meeting.
Right. Okay.
Or to your first meeting in July or whatever. And, and then you don't need to, a vote to take it off because it's automatically on your agenda.
Right. Any other questions or comments, Dan?
So if there was something that was indefinite, would, would there ever be any circumstance where there was something that you didn't want put a definitive time on to re-discuss, or we're going to postpone this indefinitely?
If you have to investigate it, you don't know how much time you're gonna.
Would you say postpone indefinitely, or would you say lay on the table?
Yeah, but if you postpone it indefinitely, you need a vote to reconsider it.
You would need a vote to reconsider.
Yeah. So.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
I hope so. You never know with these things.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, we are adjourned. So we will go straight into the special mayor and council meeting of Monday, January eighth, twenty twenty-four, that is being held in person in the council chambers and also via Z. So we'll start with roll call. Clerk Bakura?
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Patterson, Counselor Piazza, Counselor Artali, Counselor Sheffield, and Counselor Norris are present.
Okay, please stand, salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the new business is Resolution R dash twenty-four dash one dash one. Counselor Patterson?
And the mic.
Therefore be resolved.
Therefore be resolved that the mayor and the council accept a provisionally opposed, approved contract with Palateer Construction Management, sixty-seven West Main Street, Suite four eleven, Clinton, Connecticut, zero six four one three, for the replacement of windows, storefronts, and concrete entrance at two ninety-five Meridian Street, Groton, at a cost not to exceed six hundred twenty-one thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars in no sense to be paid to capital reserve funds. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We just discussed this. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing nine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, counsel.